I'd like to call this meeting to order Thursday, March twenty seventh. Bloomfield Town Planning and Zoning Commission at seven oh three P M. First item on the agenda is a call to order.
Oh, sorry. Okay, we have.
A roll call.
Roll call. Chair Byron Lester.
Here.
Commissioner Dwight Bolton. Absent. Commissioner Leon Peters. Absent. Commissioner Stephen Millet.
Here.
Commissioner Jennifer Marsh Neely. Absent. Commissioner Kevin Goff.
Here.
Commissioner Renee James.
Here.
Commissioner Ola Ina.
I'm here online.
Commissioner Katie Blint. Absent. And one vacancy. We have a quorum?
Thank you. First item on the agenda, Chair entertain a motion to table the minutes from our February meeting, February twenty seventh, two thousand twenty five, for some additional revisions.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
A poll. Abstention. Chair votes aye.
Just want to say for the record, it's seven oh two P M. And Commissioner Marsh Neely joined the commission. The meeting.
Thank you. Okay. First item on the agenda is a public hearing. I'll read the legal notice. Legal notice published in the Hartford Current Friday, March fourteenth and Friday, March twenty first. Notice is hereby given that the Town Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a regular meeting on Thursday, March twenty seventh, two thousand twenty five, hybrid and in person at eight hundred Bloomfield Ave, Council Chambers Room, and virtually via Zoom to consider the following. Thirty-one Toby Road, units seventeen through nineteen. Special permit use requests special per section four dot three dot C dot four dot D. Any non-residential use not otherwise prohibited, which takes place within the confines of an enclosed building where no goods, equipment, or materials are stored outside to allow an axe-throwing and smash room establishment in the I one zone. Applicant is Marcus Fers, property owner, Toby Road, comma LLC.
I'm promoting Mr. Marcus Fers to panelist.
Okay, before we start our public hearing, I just want to go over the process in which we conduct our public hearing. We first hear a presentation from the applicant. We'll then have comments from our director. We'll then take questions from the audience. Questions from the commission, comments from the audience, comments from the commission. And then the applicant will have one last chance to make any closing remarks before we close the public hearing. With that said, Marcus.
Good afternoon, folks. How are we doing? Hi, Commissioner.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello.
Yes, we can hear you.
Would you like to start, or how can I help?
Yes, no, you can present your application.
Oh, yes, so the space for thirty-one Toby Road, the plan is to use the back location of units seventeen through nineteen, or seventeen and eighteen, to have operate as a axe-throwing and smash room venue. So what I want to do is be able to have a space where this can be operated for public use as a social and entertainment venue. And yeah, that is the current plan of how to utilize the space. It was formerly a gym. And that is what we're going to kind of re-change the space, re-utilize the space, and use it as a way to get new and family-friendly entertainment back into the town of Bloomfield.
Okay, is
acknowledge that Commissioner Dwight Bolton joined the meeting at seven oh five P M.
Yes, thank you. Is that it for your presentation?
I didn't know if I needed to have, I didn't have any of the paperwork. I didn't know what you guys needed to have in front of you. I know that we did have some some drawings of what the space was going to look like. I know that I submitted it. I didn't know if that was something that you needed to give to you as well, or how I can actually put that into the Zoom. I can do that if necessary. I can do, you know, I have layouts of the space or how you kind of want.
Saying something. Okay, Jonathan, would you like to comment on that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. We did forward a staff report to you, I think, as this is, we're familiar with the site. Again, we'll report that the property owner and the tenants continue to cooperate with all of us, town officials, in a positive and constructive manner to resolve any past zoning and other safety issues that exist on the overall site, not necessarily at this particular unit. This use is permitted in the zone under a special permit. And our primary issue and the plans we have are not, don't give you a lot of detail, and you may want to ask for additional detail, but our primary concern is with waste disposal. These uses create a great deal of waste, and the waste can be, you know, broken targets and whatnot related, wooden items related to the axe-throwing portion. And then various glass and metal and general waste related to the other operation going on, as well as they're requesting a paint room, which also will generate some waste. We think that a very detailed, specific and waste disposal system needs to be put in place in terms of both distinguishing between hazardous and non-hazardous materials, labeling and separating them. We've listed them all on page three, four, and three of our applicant, I wouldn't go through it. But with that in place, and the sort of the vision for this general area to make it a more entertainment area, staff can support the application, subject to no outside storage and all of the other necessary permits and things that we have suggested. If the commission and particularly that no alcohol of any kind will be permitted, unless otherwise permitted by the commission through a special permit process. If the commission does not feel it has received sufficient information up to this point on detailing the layout within the space, then the commission can keep the public hearing open until its next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Right now, we'll take questions from the audience. Is there anyone out there with any questions regarding this application? Linda, will you check online and see if there's anyone online with any questions?
None online with their hand raised? If there's anyone online that would like to speak, please raise your hand.
Thank you. Then we'll start with the commission, and I'll start with Commissioner Millet. Any questions regarding this?
That's the only question I would have is with the waste disposal, is there any consideration taken into account for the e-waste?
Now, when we say yes, so all electronics would be going to, you know, the where electronics would be recycled regardless, so if I'm taking it to any of the recycling plants or to the like the town dump or anything, it's nothing's going to be disposed of, and just like regular trash. This is all going to be recycled in the fashion of where, you know, things would need to go that would be thrown away. So, yes, it has been considered of where we would be putting things in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner James.
Could you describe the hours?
Yeah, so the hours would be closed Monday, Tuesdays, so Wednesday, Thursday would be more of like a four to eight P M, four to nine P M. And then the Friday, Saturday, Sundays would be a little bit later, where we're looking at Fridays would be four to possibly, you know, ten, eleven. Saturdays would be roughly the same, where we're looking at Saturdays would be opening a little bit earlier with maybe around the noon time, same with Sundays, and doing like twelve to possibly eight. So not going into, you know, the twelves, ones, twos o'clock and kind of wrapping up more so around ten to eleven, which is more the standard for a lot of the venues that have been throughout the state.
Okay, and could you describe, what is this, what is paint parties?
So, separate from like what you would see in a smash room, you're going to have a room where we'll set up things such as like a you know, a canvas frame where you can have, you know, a small party where people we can, where we set up things like almost like super soakers and paint guns that will be able to paint things, will have paint brushes, and people can come in and kind of have a nice date night. They can draw, we can do, we'll use U V paints where things can kind of, you know, have a little bit different ways of entertainment. So really just having targets, like setting up canvases for people to paint on, and they're having, you know, full coveralls.
Okay, and is there a plan for food to be served here, or what's the plan for?
Any food that would be served would be prepackaged. We didn't have any plans for any serving of any hot food or making of any hot food on our own.
So, John mentioned there's no alcohol, so that's like, are people bringing their own food and drinks, or you're only having what's available for purchase?
So, that's a question that I had because I did in the description that we were looking to do the possibility of beer and wine, but no hard alcohol was our initial plan with the space.
Sorry, did you have any?
I don't believe that was included in the description that he wrote. But if that is the intention, then it would have to be a special permit for liquor
Okay.
as it has to meet distance requirements.
Okay, so that's a separate conversation?
Yeah.
Okay, great. And then I guess, what's the capacity of this? What would you say would be like the average amount of people you would have there?
Just based off of the general size of each space, we would have of each lane, we'd kind of max out at six. Under fifty is going to be the general plan, like at a fully occupied spaces. We're not having more than fifty to sixty people in our, at any given time.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions.
Commissioner, just to interject, the ultimate capacity will be determined by the fire marshal.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goff.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to follow up on both my fellow commissioners. I want to go back to Commissioner Millet's question about e-waste and sort of go back to the staff memo. There's a note in there about disposal of hazardous waste, and I assume that those would be coming from the electronic parts, like, are you smashing televisions? Are you doing, are you concerned doing something like that?
In the event that it was something like a television, we would be making sure that the particular types of televisions wouldn't be anything that has hazardous waste. Like, if there's a difference between plasmas and L C D TVs, we're going to make sure that, you know, there's not using anything that would be leaking any hazardous waste in the space itself.
Okay. I guess my my concern in reading this, and I guess I'll ask you the question directly. You know, axe-throwing, wooden targets, even breaking glass, because glass can be refused. Is there really a reason, is there a market? Does it hurt your business if we were to say you simply couldn't destroy electronic items because those need to be recycled anyway? They really shouldn't be? You know, I don't really completely understand why we would be smashing them up.
Well, if in the event of something that's like a outdated printer or keyboard, that would also fall under an electronic item. So those are all things that would be if they're using things that are kind of past their planned use, usage life. So these aren't going to be things that are going to be brand new. These are more equipment that's no longer operational.
Right, but my question to you is not, my question to you is if we were simply to impose a condition that these types of materials were not in the category of things you could smash up, would that be a detriment to your business model?
Yes.
Okay. I want to come back to the, some of the questions that Commissioner James asked. Regardless of sort of the capacity, you're going to have people in these rooms smashing things up and, you know, getting rowdy with a lot of equipment. How many employees do you anticipate having to sort of police this area? How many people are going to be on the premises when this is happening? To police, of your staff, to police this activity?
Well, in regards of rowdiness, that's not something that's going to be particularly a major concern because we're not, like, safety is the first priority, right? We understand that people are coming in here with throwing a sharp object with an axe and smashing things like glass, right? So we are not going to be promoting a space where we want people to kind of get as out of control as possible, right? We're, it's a contained energy that we're allowing people to kind of release. So in terms of staff, you know, we will have roughly four to six employees, we'll have an employee to kind of cover each of our lanes and making sure that once a party comes in to go to the smash room, we have someone designated to train them and kind of show them all of our rules in the space and what we're going to do and how, and before we set them off to go in there. It's not like I'll just say, okay, here you go, break what you want. We're going to make sure that we have all of our set rules before they go for safety.
But it is true, then, what I'm gathering from that, it is true that once once people are quote-trained, they will not have supervision, particular supervision in watching their activities or sort of monitoring their activities, I guess.
No, we will always have staff that's monitoring all parties as they go along. We wouldn't be, because we don't want anyone to have, to do anything that isn't approved, right? We don't want anyone throwing an axe in a way that we don't particularly want them to do. So if anyone's doing anything that's unsafe, we're always having staff that's keeping an eye on everyone that's in the premises.
Okay. I just, I guess I have a question for staff in terms of this sort of line of thinking. In looking at this application when it came through, is there any is there any state or general if not regulation guidelines for this kind of activity? I mean, did you do any research on this?
Well, we researched what it was. But no, we did not locate any general guidelines or regulations for control. And quite frankly, we did not see if there were those in other jurisdictions in Connecticut or elsewhere.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Marshall Neely. Any questions?
Yes, thank you so much. I, you know, in trying to garner a better understanding, I tried to Google some information about this axe-throwing business. And I have a question with regard to the ages of the people who will be, you know, participating in this activity. Do you have a minimum age? Or is there a cutoff? How old are the people? Like, you're not going to have a twelve-year-old throwing an axe. It's, you know, one of my questions.
So that's something that we've kind of gone back and forth on. That is something that we would primarily have the judgment of, one, you know, what our insurance providers would say. And two, we have, we've also considered the option of for smaller, younger parties, they have things that are like inflatables or Velcro. So rather than actually just throwing, you know, a sharpened axe, we've had things where they're Velcro targets, whereas opposed to, you know, an axe, they're throwing on a Velcro target for it to stick on, to still give them the same experience without having to throw an actual axe or hatchet. So there are substitutions to meet people who are, for any kind of age restrictions that we've looked into.
Okay. That's all the questions that I have for now because I had to do some research on my own. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bolton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Coleman, you stated earlier that it would be wise, I guess, for this commission to maybe request that the applicant submit some form of waste disposal plan. Do you have a format that you could recommend to the applicant that wouldn't be onerous on him to prepare? Because I would certainly recommend that we require that some form of waste segregation or waste disposal plan hazardous versus non-hazardous be submitted, you know, with this application. But nothing tedious, it isn't.
Commissioner, we agree. If you look at page three of our comments, which basically deal with waste, and I was a little neglectful in the prior question, we actually did look at the regulations that West Hartford has for this type of use. But there, we were, you know, that they have, you know, they give us the scheduling of it, where the bins that it's going to be in, how it's going to be stored securely, labeling, separation.
Director, is it part of the conditions for approval?
Part of our staff.
Okay.
On page three.
No, I didn't see it before. Thank you. It's why you're in charge. Let's see.
No apology necessary.
I do have two questions. I haven't been in, on Toby Road in that area in a while, but this goes back to the hours that I see here versus Commissioner James' question and how he answered in terms of his hours of operation. There's a discrepancy between what he said versus what you have here in the approval, so I'll get to that. But if you're smashing things in your smash room at eleven A M. in the morning, is this extremely soundproof so that there's no disruption to the other tenants?
I'll let the applicant answer.
Yes, I'm looking at you, but I should be looking at the applicant.
Well, I mean, I can't, it's not, not that it would be any louder than the use of the space prior, for what, when it was used as a gym. I was understanding that there was music that was played at loud volumes, and I don't, there's no expectation of it being any louder than what it was at that first prior use.
So and I'm assuming these hours were what were agreed to originally, Director Coleman?
Those are hours that we quite frankly put in, and there is a discrepancy between the hours the applicant just gave us, and I think the hours that the applicant gave us, we can, are appropriate.
Yeah, and I'm open to.
We need to adjust what's here.
Okay.
And we will hold them to the hours that he offered.
Fair enough.
Yeah, because if eleven A M., I mean, it's too early, we're open to figuring out what works best with you guys, you know? Eleven A M. not so much. When you said eleven A M., did you mean eleven P M.?
No, no, it says eleven, it says eleven A M. Monday through Thursday.
No, because we'd be closed on Monday.
No, I got you.
And Tuesday.
And Tuesday. Mr. Chair, those are all the questions that I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ina, do you have any questions regarding this application? Oh, you muted.
Oh, sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you speak to the, to safety precautions? And also how you handle accident, accident prevention and actually resolving any potential accidents?
Can you ask that question?
Okay.
Another one.
Can you speak to safety precautions, personal safety precautions? And also accident protocols?
Yeah, so in terms of safety, like, as we okay, so in terms of safety, we're going to make sure that everybody that comes in, everyone's briefed, you know, as you come in of what are the proper ways to where, say, a glass bottle can be thrown or broken? Or which ways in the proper forming of how to throw an axe? So that we're mitigating any opportunities of an accident? Because, you know, thankfully, this is a business that, you know, because they're such sharp objects, you very seldom hear about accidents in this line of business because we're making sure that as people come in, we have rules and strict rules of how to make sure each person is handling all the equipment in the facility. Because we understand that there is a sense of people being irresponsible, so we're making sure that there is going to be very strict rules and regulations to stop that. And in the event that there is an accident, we are making sure that, you know, we have a way to how to respond and how to make sure that, you know, all staff are trained and first aid and making sure that people, no one's getting hurt. We're making sure that everyone has, you know, proper understanding of how to attend to any situations that can come.
Now, again, would you mind just let us know what really is it? Is it people throwing real axes at targets or at objects? And how is that, you also made, there's also the mention of crushing things and
Yes, sir.
Would you mind describing exactly what takes place? Do you hold an axe and throw it at what?
Yes, now, you'll be in, the person who's throwing an axe will be standing between, with the target facing them, the target would be roughly twelve to fourteen feet in front of them, and they're standing between two chain-link fences to stop any bouncing of chains so that the targets never cross, right? So that if you and another individual who's next to you, you're both throwing down in front of the target through the chain link so that there's in a way that the targets are set up so that there is a minimal chance of the targets, of the axes actually bouncing around or bouncing back. So once they go and go forward, they fall flat, so and with the chain links, that'll be about six feet wide. So from one side to another, will be about six feet apart. So from one side to another, will be about six feet apart. And that's, that will be the target at which the the axes will. And yes, they will be uh, they will be axes, but these will not be uh heavily sharpened. Because that's not necessary for, to be able to hit the targets in the way that they are uh prepared.
How about this smashing? What, how, what is this smashing?
Yes, so we have things like glass bottles or ceramics or, you know, things that uh old, old printers or VCRs or uh, let's say, a coffee machine, right? That's, that's, that's no longer in operation. We would get these, these things and we'd set them up in a, excuse me, in a roughly um I don't remember the exact dimensions off the, off the top of my head, but I think it was about fifteen by fifteen. And that would be able to to have, you know, particular walls. We're making sure that there's no swinging of of, you know, say someone wants to break a, break a glass with a hammer. There's gonna be no swinging towards another individual, right? All swinging has to be done facing an opposite direction. So that way, we are, we're not making sure that anybody's accidentally hitting any other individuals.
Are you talking about um smashing this with axes or other objects or are they smashing them on the ground or?
Yes.
They smash them on the ground?
Yes.
Okay, any protective gear that?
Yes, sir. Uh, full, it would actually be full coveralls from top to bottom is the, is our proposed plan. With uh face masks to make sure that if any glass is is broken, that you're not having any pieces that are going back and hitting people in the face. So we have like full PPE that would cover the face from the ears. And all that would make sure that there's no glasses being covered on their body. So full coveralls and anyone that comes into the facility is, will have to wear uh closed-toed shoes.
Thank you very much. You're enlightening me. I've never heard of axe, axe throwing or smashing. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Uh, yes, I just have um two things. One is, have you read the conditions that the staff ask you to adhere to?
Um, I don't believe I received that.
Okay.
So I, I, when I say no would be the answer to your question.
Okay. Um, the second thing I wanted to ask you, you have a schedule here for waste management plan. Then on the disposal of the electronics, you have as used. So will you be able to have, you know, like someone on standby? Like, I guess every time when someone comes in and they're destroying PCs or televisions or printers, uh that they're gonna come in, you know, like immediately and remove that stuff? Or 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 is it done like at the end of the day?
Yes.
Someone else? I I guess what I'm curious about is, say one person comes in, is there a time limit that he has as far as like destroying something before someone else comes in and use that same space?
Yes, sir. So each session would be roughly twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes?
Yeah, roughly twenty to twenty-five minutes if, depending. Well, so that way, we still have uh ample time for staff to clean the the area prior to anybody else going in for another session.
Okay, so I take it then for electronic disposals, that's gonna be done? When you say as used, I guess at the end of the day?
Yes, sir.
When, okay. Uh, and you haven't seen all the conditions that the staff is asking you to meet in terms of what our requirements are to approve this application?
Um, I, as opposed, from when I have submitted the application and I have not received anything new as of then, no, sir.
Okay. Uh, thank you. That's, that's all I have right now. Jonathan, I guess for you then. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Uh Commissioner Marshall Neely.
Thank you so much. The the materials that are going to be smashed, how are you receiving those? Are they being donated? Is someone dropping them off and leaving them at a, in a designated area? Where is that coming from?
Uh, well, there's multiple places of where we plan on sourcing things. We, like many of the glasses, uh, we would be receiving from the Redemption Center. Uh, we've spoken with the owner there who's making sure that, you know, many of the glass bottles that people um bring in there, we would be able to purchase those. And then we would then wash them, making sure that, you know, they're they're clean and that there's no, you know, extra liquids or anything within those. And then we would, we've also spoken up with um like the Goodwill, um, they have their uh local district centers, where the distribution centers, where they have a lot of their surplus materials and things that don't get put out in stores. That is the, some of the, some of the places where we would be sourcing this, as well as like, you know, tag sales and things of that nature.
And do you have plans for having security on the property? For example, if you you said that there would be no um alcoholic beverages, I think, I think that's what you said. But suppose someone came in and was already inebriated. Do you have, um, because of the nature of the business, do you have someone designated as your security who can say, you know, you 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 already have, you know, you look like you can't handle this and we're gonna have to ask you to leave? Do you have anyone uh designated for your business to handle security issues?
Uh, so to confirm, uh, we did note that beer and wine is the intended uh plans for beverages. But we are not, if your question is, is saying like hired security where that is their sole purpose, no. We will have staff trained to look for signs of inebriation of all entrance. And if somebody is appearing that they're, you know, under the influence and and we would not, we would just cancel their their reservation and, you know, tell them that, you know, they will not be able to uh participate and either reschedule or refund their money.
Okay, and and my last question, I'm I'm circling back on the materials that would be donated to you or dropped off or smashing. So suppose there is a business that's going to bring you old, old uh printers and computers. Uh, do you have a specific time that they bring it? And are they storing this outside or inside the building?
As of this moment, we have no plans for outside storage. Uh, with the design of the space, we do plan on utilizing um some of the, some of the backspace for storing inventory. And in terms of when they would deliver it, that would all be coordinated with what times work for them. And, you know, because we would be open more so in the afternoons during the week, that leaves a lot of uh time for us to do it, say, during the daytime. Where, where during, you know, regular business hours.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just two comments related to that. One, staff report recommends no outside storage. And two, um, the applicant has indicated here that um the facility would be um available and open to all ages. That being the case, um, the sale or distribution of alcohol will be very challenging.
Well, uh, that's what I was gonna ask you. Um, he didn't mention about sell, but he mentioned about being able to bring it. Is there a distinction between allowing people to bring it in versus actually selling it?
The plan is, is for usage of of selling beer and alcohol, uh, beer and wine. Although I don't see where uh there would be an an issue in terms of purchasing of that or for it to be of all ages to have an issue. Because, you know, uh, entertainment venues such as a bowling alley sells beer and wine. And children, two-year-olds can go there. So um, I would say that, that that wouldn't cause conflict for us because of the design of the space, that would still, all beer and wine would be in a, you know, behind a bar area where, you know, children wouldn't have access to it.
There are, there are, the bowling alley, I don't wanna get too deep with it, the bowling alley has restricted times when they I would suggest that if the applicant uh is um committed to to having alcohol available, that the commissioner may want to consider that as a separate special department, add a, as a separate hearing.
Okay. So you do understand that until you get approved for that, you couldn't have anyone bring it or definitely not sell it?
Correct, I understand.
If this application is approved?
Yes, I have, uh, I've I've done the research with the uh state liquor control board, yes.
Okay, um, Linda, is there any one, is there any comments from anyone in the audience regarding this application?
Uh, we have six attendees and there is no one with their hands raised.
All right, then we'll start with the commission.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure if out in the public they wanna speak.
Sure, uh, have to come to the podium, state your name and address, please, for the record. And these are comments, not questions. We'll let you have the one question.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
And if you can sign in for the record after, please.
Hi, Kelly Mann, One Adams Road. I have a question about uh the cleanup of the rooms. Are they just with a broom? Do you hose them down? And if so, does the water go down the drain with all the chemicals and things that you've destroyed?
Uh, there is no plans to be using any like water. This would be all cleaned up with uh just a a broom and uh we'd use a vacuum to clean up any small debris that would be in there.
And paint too, you said you're working with paint, so the clothes would need to be washed and your coveralls.
Yes, and tho- and those are all uh, it would all be machine washable. So these would all be washed at a separate location. So yes, it would all be um you know, washable paint. These are, these are all machine washable paints.
That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. At this time, we'll take comments from the com- we'll take comments from the commission and we'll start with Commissioner Bolton.
Well, I'm gonna probably be the first one in the smash room. There's uh, I I got a lot of, you know, tension to get rid of, so I'm gonna probably be the first one. So thank you. I I will say that um although it's not a new thing, right, axe throwing? And I do a lot of Filipino martial arts, so I'm constantly throwing knives and axes. It's very dangerous, so I hope you have enough insurance coverage. I certainly wouldn't be mixing alcohol with throwing those type of things, but I wish you the best.
Thank you. Commissioner Marshall Neely.
Thank you. I, I heard your comparison to, to a bowling alley. And I have to say that uh in a bowling alley, they're not throwing axes. So I I have a concern with little people being in the, in the uh facility with with someone who might have had something to drink and someone's throwing an axe or smashing something. And as we all know, little people tend to scoot away from whoever they're with from time to time. And so my concern would be uh children who are in that facility and the age range, the minimum age where you would permit someone to come into that facility. It seems like it should be um older, older people, like maybe teenagers who can handle something like this. But that's just my comments for now. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Uh Commissioner Goff.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I I don't know if we wanna talk about the teenage brain, but no, I I um I find the use something that is a little strange to me. It would be my preference that electronics and things like that were not destroyed. Uh, but you've indicated that would be a major problem to your business model. I I I guess, you know, I think that if we're trying to figure out as a zoning commission, if this is allowable use, it seems like it is as long as all the safety precautions and everything are in place. Looking at the conditions, I would um like to, the first condition that's been added about no alcohol, I would like that to say no alcohol or other intoxicants. Uh, now we live in the age of cannabis and everything else, not that you could sell it, but I think we need to be very careful about people coming into a facility like this um in states, you know, in in not fully um uh aware states. I would like to see a commission, I would like to see a condition about the training of all personnel hired at the uh, at the uh facility, that they all have to be, you know, they ha- as you said, they need to be trained in first aid and safety precautions so that everybody working there is aware of what the um, the uh 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 protocols are. And I I guess I I would agree with Commissioner Marshall Neely. Uh, I would like to see an age restriction on this. As I said, we won't get into teenagers versus young kids. But um, it certainly seems to me that if you're gonna smash things, probably having kids a certain age before they're even around that. Mainly because, you know, young children need adult supervision most of the time, especially in an environment like that. I think those things should be added to the conditions, but otherwise um I don't see a problem with this as being a valid use of the, of the space. And it sounds like the noise issue is no worse than it was with the gym. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh Commissioner James.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanna start by thanking you for choosing to do your business in Bloomfield. I feel that it would be very exciting to have an axe throwing and smash room. I would hope my insurance could cover like a standing session because I too have a lot of rage. But I'm very excited. I've been to axe throwing before. Um, I'm familiar with the offering of food and beverages there. So I actually disagree with some of my commissioners that you, I could imagine that um sale of such would be very important to your P and L, that's separate from what we're discussing here. But I would hope that you'd come back to have a special permit to have the sale of this. Um, I would agree that probably some sort of age restriction would um help ease kind of the feelings or concerns that we have on the commission about such um substances on the, on on the site. Uh, but I'm very excited at the option of this. I hope um that, you know, with the conditions, you have a very successful business and um pending all approvals, but um, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh Commissioner Mallett.
So i- in general, I I think it's a very interesting business model. I know um axe throwing is popular. Uh, I haven't done it myself, I might have to try it. I do like that, you know, you have researched, you know, the options for some of the the ages. I never would have thought of the Velcro option. Oh, I might start out with that one. But I I know for for the safety, we have a lot of that written in. I'm assuming probably a lot of it would be um required by insurance or OSHA for your employees. Maybe less so land use, but just i- i- in general, safety would, of course, you know, something we would wanna see. And my my last comment would be just that, you know, handling waste responsibly. I I guess it might take a a detour and get extra smashed before it goes to its final destination for some fun, but just ha- having that disposed of um, yeah, reasonably environmentally appropriate. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh Commissioner Aina, any comments regarding this application?
I would just like to echo the comments of my fellow commissioners.
I would just like to echo the comments of my fellow commissioners. Everything I can think of to comment on is already been commented, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner James.
Um, one additional comment, and this may be more for staff, I don't know, um, or for the applicant as well as we've been approving more applications in this, um, industrial park uh, that will have more people on site more frequently, and I have been there before and it's not the best for parking, and I'm thinking we just did a dance stu- we just approved a plan for a dance studio, there's a event space there, um, and now this, that, thinking you know, just capacity back there in terms of where people are parking, and then if there is overflow, it is kind of far from the street, but just thinking that there's the brewery across the street that does get very busy and there's lots of cars just parked along the road that uh, we want to be mindful of, um, traffic back there as we approve more uses with more people to be there at once.
If the appropriate parking cars are parked there, we pr- it'll probably be handled, and if we have a parking problem, that's probably a good thing.
Um, and, and my final comments is, um, I, you know, I'll be the first to say that I'm not too familiar with this type of business, um, but I know that our future plans for that area is to tr- is to try to develop it into a arts and entertainment area. So something like this, um, could be the beginning of, you know, some additional new entertainment type stuff that, that we haven't been used to. Um, I do agree with the, uh, my fellow commissioners regarding the age limit, I mean, uh, that might be appropriate to at least have it at a certain age. I, I don't know what that age would be because I'm not too familiar with the, the whole concept. But I, I, I oh, we lost, oh, okay. I do welcome you to Bloomfield and, uh, I, I'm glad that you have chosen this area and, and I do wish you the best in it. It's, it's gonna be different, but something to look forward to.
Thank you.
With, with that said, you have one last opportunity to make any closing remarks before we entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Uh, I appreciate all of you, you know, taking the time to consider it, and I, I think that, as you said, you know, building a, a the future use of that space, I think that this is a good opportunity to, to really start growing the idea of people coming to the town of Bloomfield for, you know, fun nights out and parties and thinking of Bloomfield as a nice, a nice place to go when somebody wants to have a, a fun opportunity or a fun night. So I, I think that this would be a very good use for the space, and I think that it, you know, that the, the future of the area feels like it can be very promising, and I, and I appreciate you taking the time to consider this.
Okay, thank you. With that said, the chair entertained a motion to close the public hearing, is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, are there any further discussions? Commissioner James.
Did we add, um, Commissioner Goff's comments as conditions to the approval? For training and, oh, excuse me.
Thank you.
Are there any further discussions? It's been moved, it's been seconded, no further discussions? All those in favor of approving this application signify by saying aye. Oh, I'm s- yeah, I'm sorry, to close the public hearing before we vote on the application, I'm sorry. All those in favor of closing the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, chair votes aye. Now at this time, the chair entertained a motion on this application.
I motion to approve the request by Marcus Ferci, excuse me, for a special permit to use, special permit used to allow an axe throwing and smash room establishment under section four dot three dot C dot four dot D, any non-residential use not otherwise prohibited, which takes place within the confines of an enclosed building where no goods, equipments, or materials are stored outside at thirty-one Toby Road, Unit seventeen dash nineteen, with the following con- conditions, um, as listed in memo dated a memo and addendum dated, um, March twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, and as discussed.
With additions made by the, by the members of the commission.
With additions made by members of the com- of the commission. Uh, to say the date.
And
On March thirty, twenty-seven.
And, and subject to the hours presented by the applicant this evening.
And subject to the hours presented by the applicant this evening.
Seven.
It's been moved and seconded, any further discussions?
Mr. Chairman, if your permission, I just would note you do, you did not put an age limitation in at this time. You may want to do that on some other time on reconsideration, but my, I'm not sure how we would set a basis for age, quite frankly.
Okay.
And I'm not sure how we would enforce it.
Okay.
Even as desirable as it might be.
Right, all right. Thank you for that comment. So once again, all those in fav- any further questions regarding this application? It's been moved and it's been seconded, all those in favor of approving this application signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, chair votes aye. Motion carries, congratulations, and we wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much, thank you all.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is also a public hearing, and I'll lea- I'll read the legal notice. Legal notice published Friday, March fourteenth and Friday, March twenty-first in Hartford Current. Notice is hereby given that the Town Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a regular meeting Thursday, March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five, at seven PM in person and hybrid at eight hundred Bloomfield Ave Council Chambers Room and virtually via Zoom to consider the following. Two Barnard Lane, Suite one oh one. Special permit use and revised site plan per sections four dot one dot D dot four dot V and nine dot four dot B to allow a private school in the BCD District. Applicant is Sasha Zater- Z- Zaterka? Sorry if I mispronounced it, uh, property, property owner, uh, special acquisitions, number one, comma LLC. Anyone here from that application, please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Sasha Zaterka. Zaterka's also part of the family, says it that way, so you were, did very well with her. And, um, I live at three three four zero Phelps Road in West Suffield. And I thank you for the opportunity to, um, talk about the application that we submitted. Um, I'm the founder of ASAS School, which is the applicant, um, for the private school that we would like to have located at Two Barnard Lane, Suite one oh one. I'd also like to just introduce the property owner, Mark Kessler, back in the corner there, um, who is here in support as well. Um, you can go to the next slide. ASAS School will be a non-traditional private school that will open this fall with grades six to eight, adding a grade every year thereafter to ultimately serve grades six to twelve by two thousand twenty-nine. I'm often asked what ASAS means. We first came upon it because it's my name backwards. And thankfully then, a little Google search, I came upon and engaged with some friends who are native Hindi speakers, that it has a really beautiful meaning around feelings and empathy. And then another friend dug into it more and it's very similar meaning in at least six other languages, so the essence of that was hard to kind of ignore, and it was a fun one to go with. Um, so you can go to the next slide. ASAS School is, uh, has come to be as a confluence of that impact of various roles in my life. I'm a licensed social worker and most recently enjoyed the broad applications of my social work roots as I led outdoor early childhood classes featuring the Tinker Garden curriculum for over seven years. As I witnessed the power of self-directed mi- mixed age learning through that role, as well as through my daughter's experiences at a Montessori school since two thousand eighteen, I increasingly became more convinced that the main tenants of these approaches to learning didn't have to stop when kids hit middle and high school. Additionally, as the evidence of the high rates of anxiety and depression in adolescents continued to mount, my conviction deepened in wanting to create a schooling experience that could center mental wellness throughout and not separate from academic learning. Next slide. As an intentionally small school, which is often called a micro school, ASAS School will be able to provide individualized academics, fully integrated with mental wellness skill building. We will be a school where, where students and staff can breathe. We will offer a much-needed option for students who need a different learning experience other than the many traditional schooling options in our area. And while I love to speak about the unique school that ASAS School will be, I'm going to try to stay focused on the reason we're all here tonight. So I'm going to shift to more of the practical side of everything pertaining to our special permit application and site plan review, in order to anticipate some of the potential questions and alleviate some possible concerns. I appreciate the chance to put my voice to some of it tonight. Next slide, please. So our hours of operation, um, will have minimal impact on the other tenants of the building as their arrival and departure times vary, and many of the staff of both companies are often off-site. Also, our students will be dropped off by families after the other Bloomfield schools' start times, as well as picked up after the other schools have been dismissed, not adding to congestion of buses and cars during those common peak times. As you see, this fall, we're projecting twenty-five students and four staff, and you can see our first three-year projections beyond that. Next slide. More specific to the zoning regulations that are the focus of the TPZ's considerations, the proposed use for education is included in the uses permitted in the Bloomfield Center District. As I pivot, I do want to tell you specifically why I have prioritized locating ASAS School in Bloomfield and specifically in the town center. Over the past several years, as I have intentionally learned more and more about Bloomfield and built relationships with many varied residents, my conviction has steadily strengthened that Bloomfield is the ideal home for a non-traditional school. Next slide. There are deep mutual benefits for ASAS School as well as for the town. The vibrancy of students being present will add to the energy in the center of town. We will regularly, often daily, walk with our students to the new public library a block away, Philly Park and the Green, and there are also so many potential partnerships with the many nearby businesses as well as right here in Town Hall to extend our classroom beyond the walls at Two Barnard. We will also diligently pursue opportunities for students to give back to the Bloomfield community, such as through helping the efforts of the Trees for Bloomfield Initiative as just one early example. Again, I could go on and on about my passion for being located in the town center, but let's shift our focus to the actual space at Two Barnard, Suite one oh one. Next slide. The existing use for the whole property at Two Barnard Lane is office space. Suite one oh one has been vacant, and changing the use from office use to education use is supported by the growing need to create creatively offset broad office vacancies, which I believe, um, your recent report shows over sixteen percent here in Bloomfield. So we would love to help offset that a bit. Next slide. This is the, you know, the heart of it all, and you do have, you know, printouts there, um, if it's hard to see on screen, but, uh, the size and layout of the Suite one oh one is ideal in so many regards for our vision and our needs. Suite one oh one is eighteen hundred square feet, and the fire marshal has determined a maximum occupancy of eighty for educational use, which gives us ample room for growth. The large open space and four separate spaces are ideal for our learning model. Unlike traditional classrooms with rows or groupings of desks, we will offer varied learning areas throughout the open space and utilize the separate rooms for various needs. Suite one oh one will not necess- oh, sorry, yes. Uh, Suite one oh one will not necessitate significant changes to the interior to support the change in use nor for our specific needs. We may consider adding a sink to the space that's marked one oh one D, um, where there's a wet wall, and so it could be an easy add, um, with the piping already there. Likewise, we do not anticipate, um, significant changes to the exterior building in our plans. Uh, we will not be adding any exterior lights or any additions, parking or other previous services. The property owner had plans underway prior to ASAS School even viewing the property to add a handicap accessible ramp to the main entrance. Likewise, the property owner had also been in the midst of determining a second egress for Suite one oh one with the fire marshal. And the property owner and I are currently in the process of determining the cost of adding the, um, emergency exit. And, um, the location was jointly agreed upon by the owner and the fire marshal, so in the meantime, I, uh, ASAS School has also contracted with Crosskey Architects, so they're already in the midst of doing a complete code analysis to determine the code requirements for the second egress, as well as any other required changes to meet code for educational use, all of which will be addressed during the permitting process with the building official, of course. Now to shift our attention to the site plan and how it too is ideal for our needs. Next slide. So our projected enrollment and correlating staff numbers will minimize the number of cars generated and further the location on Barnard Lane, which in and of itself, as you see and are probably familiar with, since we probably can see it from a window here, um, is a cul-de-sac with a two-car width and a large median in the middle. Plus, there's just generally dispersed numbers of cars on Barnard Lane throughout the day, it's, there's not, you know, a one time that they're all entering and exiting to access the other, um, the total of the six office buildings, so, um, all of those factors will ensure little impact on surrounding traffic flow or congestion. And as noted in the staff report, the parking area on the property of Two Barnard Lane is more than adequate to accommodate the existing two businesses, as well as a small number of staff parking for ASAS School, plus the daily drop-off and pickup of their, of our students by their families. The entrance and exit drive that you can see, um, leads from Barnard Lane to the parking lot behind the building is optimally situated to prevent any traffic hazards. The fire marshal agreed to the indicated circulation p- plan for student drop-off and pickup. Now to move on to signage, just really quickly, um, next slide. The existing sign will remain intact, and our logo, as you can see on the right, uh, would, would just be added in a reprint on the same structure. To finish up my remarks tonight, I can't pass up the chance to highlight a few excerpts from the incredible letters of support from Bloomfield residents that we included with our special application, and I hope you could read them in full. I'm not gonna read the quotes tonight, though I really would love to, they make my heart sing, of course, and though, we can just keep them on the screen if you'd like, um, to peek at them as we continue. Um, thank you for letting me speak tonight, it has been an honor to share some points verbally, and I truly look forward to working with you all as partners as we establish ASAS School here in Bloomfield.
Thank you. Um, Jonathan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, from a zoning perspective, fairly straightforward. The use is permitted. The site and the struck and the building uh, meet, uh, all of the conditions. As the applicant indicated, a traffic management plan was submitted, uh, which we think, um, the plan is appropriate. Drop-off areas are appropriate. Uh, there's sufficient parking, traffic pattern is good. And, you know, in summary, we, um, we think that, uh, the applicant's meets all of the requirements for parking and, uh, and, and more importantly, quite frankly, it, um, will be contributing very positively to, um, to the community and particularly to the town center. Uh, and will provide, um, you know, we think some, um, exceptional, uh, and different opportunities, uh, for the children that will be being educated there. So staff, um, fully supports, uh, the application and, um, we have some fairly straightforward, um, um, recommendations, uh, I don't think the applicant's gonna have any, any, uh, difficulty. I don't think the applicant's going to have any, any difficulty meeting.
Okay, thank you. With that said, we'll first start with questions from the audience. Anyone out there have any questions regarding this application? Linda, is there anyone online?
No one online.
Okay, then we'll start with the Commission, and we'll start with Commissioner Bolton. Any questions?
Wish I had a question, but I don't. She did such a great job. Thank you. Well, well put together and well presented, and I, Crosskey's a good architect. Laura's good.
Thank you. Commissioner Marshall Neely.
Thank you. Welcome. I, I love the concept. I love the non-traditional school concept. It's in a, in a great location. I wonder what the process or the plan would be if your, some of your students wanted to participate in athletics.
That's a valid consideration that comes up for many independent schools, especially non-traditional. Technically, my understanding is they are to be permitted in their own town, and certainly our hours would conflict possibly with practice schedules, though as a non-traditional school and a small school, I, I really believe that if we had a student who wanted our learning experience, that the flexibility is allowed. We can, we can work on a case-by-case and be able to allow a student to go to a practice, you know, regularly if that was something that was a priority. I also believe, as I've looked into for my own daughters, you know, that there are some options outside of being affiliated with a particular school district. I found not related to wanting my school here, but, you know, an interest in volleyball, that there's a regional league likewise for track and field. So there, there are other options that may not conflict and could be evening practices and could still allow students to have those outlets. The last thing I'll say, and I know this isn't zoning related, but just on that note, I have connected already with two other local school founders. One is operating already in Hartford, and one is in the process, like me, in this area, still finding a location. And we talk about, you know, opportunities, certainly not to ever develop a sports program that would be on the scale of what, you know, schools that, that have that establish would, would have, but to facilitate opportunities that could, you know, bring students together for, for activities like that, too, not necessarily as a routine.
I like your reference to track and field. I'm not going to say why. But I, I brought that up because, you know, suppose some of your students want to go outside and, and, you know, study or read outside or do some kind of athletic whatever outside the building. I just wanted to make sure that they have an opportunity to do that.
Sure. So I did try to keep myself focused, but in the longer application that I submitted, there's a whole portion on just how central outdoor learning and outdoor time is. So on the property itself, there's a, a strip of grass with two picnic tables that will absolutely be integrated as just learning space if a student wants to do work out there with, you know, appropriate parameters on how we have that freedom to move. But a lot of other models have that ability to go outside when that's what a student needs and to come inside and vice versa. Likewise, you know, just to move our bodies is also a priority inside and outside. And so walking to Philly Park will be, I think, you know, very frequent, you know, as a group, decided upon at, you know, certain times of day for physical activity and also to then go down and learn. Nature, you know, offers so many opportunities for studying nature itself, for observing, for sparking other learning. So to spend, you know, time down there as a group, maybe not the entire school at one time, but as, you know, the different individualized learning allows, it, it will be central. So while they can't necessarily go out on the property and, you know, play baseball, I think the outdoor activities will be non-traditional as well and can offset, you know, kind of any lacking of having PE or gym in the traditional sense.
Do you have or see a need for security in the building with students?
I do not anticipate that need, though I have consulted. Let me just get the, the name right. It is cited in the application with the appropriate department. It is the Connecticut Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, and they have, you know, a template and a checklist to develop our security plan. And it's not required in the same way that it is for the public districts, but it is, of course, appealing and encouraged. And, and as we, you know, certainly want to be proactive in providing all sorts of ways to have a safe environment. But I don't think we'll need security on-site. I think we'll follow those recommendations and cover the needs for the proportion of, you know, students that we have relative and take that all into account. So we'll be developing that, I would say, between now and June with that template working from, so.
And, and the last question I'm going to ask so that I can allow my fellow commissioners to speak on something. Your school will be, it opens in August, and the students get out in June? Just.
That, yeah, that is an important distinction. I am, am holding to them the day after Labor Day. It, it just feels like what used to be, and, and some schools still do it. So September 2nd is this year's start date and going into early June. So, you know, that it is a unique require or lack of requirements with private schools in the state of Connecticut with, you know, there's not the same requirement to make up snow days and all of that. But roughly speaking, you know, without having to be confined to 180 days in the same way, it will be September 2nd to early June. I, I have not set the end date for June yet, but that's the rough plan.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hey, thank you. Commissioner Goff?
Hi, yes. So I have, I think, two questions. We, a number of people up here are, are fairly familiar with that space because we used it as, we rented it. A, a group of us politically rented it at one point. It's a very nice space. We were obviously mainly operating late in the afternoon and the evenings. So we never had any, much of an overlap with the other, this is why I guess Suite 101, the other business on the, on the ground floor. Can you talk about, I don't even know how many people are employed there. Can you talk about how, would there be interaction? Would there be any problem, the fact there are shared restrooms, just the, the sharing the space?
Yeah. And I've, I've talked with Mark quite a bit about it. My understanding for the downstairs tenants is five employees?
Generally about four or five.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. And. Yes. And the, the issue around, or the question around, not, it's not an issue, shared bathrooms is also going to be thoroughly considered with the code for education space. But my understanding to this point, not specific to Crosskey's, you know, analysis yet, is that it shouldn't be a deterrent, especially, you know, one architect pointed it out, you know, due to their ages and not being on the younger end in early childhood, but also just the nature of the building, you know, and other examples that they've encountered with education use spaces and having shared bathroom spaces. So it, it should be workable in that regard.
Great. The other, the other question I had, and it gives your, you know, and you put it up on the screen. It gave sort of your plan for ramping up and starting with sixth grade and then adding a grade, six through nine, and then adding a grade each year, I guess, as hopefully the students matriculate through. And you say, I think, in the, in the commentary, you know, it's obviously serving the region. Do you have any, just in terms of your business plan and looking at this, do you have any thought of how many students you expect from Bloomfield? How many from other towns? What, what sort of the proportion is?
Yeah, I haven't anticipated that or like kind of analyzed it enough. My, my short answer that I give people as, as this has, you know, certainly been discussed is over time, I would love for a majority of, of students to come from Bloomfield. I think out of the gate, it may not, you know, it may not be predictable in that way, and we'll just try to grow. But I think a, a strong tie to the community is, is so appealing and so beneficial. And so I think the outreach will be broad to start. And then as we continue to, you know, grow our roots here, I, I really, truly would like for, not that we would preclude others coming from other towns, but I think there, you know, to be able to have that connection is important. So I haven't gotten, you know, into percentages.
Well, and you won't know until it happens. But, but you do mention, I know later on, when you talk about the whole thing with movement and obviously not, you know, everyone not using a car and not using school buses and, you know, the hope that students can walk or bike or get, 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 get here. Clearly, that's much more possible if they're Bloomfield students than if they're, you know, than, than if they're Windsor or Southfield. So.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner James?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Please excuse my ignorance, but can you explain to me, what do you mean when you say non-traditional school?
Sure. It can be very broad. So there's not one definition. It simply means that it is not kind of the stereotypical way that many of us think about schooling and most of us experienced. I went to public schools in Virginia. Most of our public schools are considered traditional schools. Most of the private schools in this area are as well. So whether, you know, there's elements that you can kind of associate with traditional schooling with, in regards to standardized testing and even having the teacher at the front of the room teaching, you know, the students in, in their desk. Those are, you know, some of the hallmarks of traditional educational settings. And then to go to the non-traditional side, you can find such a variety. The micro school idea has become quite a movement, and there's just such variety of what it can look like. And there's still traditional elements at many, and there's, you know, it, it's such a mix and a broad spectrum of, of what it can mean. So for us, you know, I could go on and on, of course, but those aspects, there will not be any testing. We won't have an obligation to even once we're accredited, which is voluntary in the state of Connecticut. But we will have, you know, other ways of supporting our students' progress. And being small allows that a little bit more, too, because of the individualized nature of things, as well as the setup that I described in a traditional school, like I had growing up and, you know, exist in, in most of our schools today, won't really happen. Small group lessons and learning could happen. Independent work can happen. You know, a pair of students with a teacher or on their own. So all varieties, really honoring that we all learn differently and allowing students, even from younger ages, but certainly at these ages, to have choice on how they learn and get a sense of how they learn best in all the different ways that that can play out. So we'll have the room set up with a variety of learning areas with those kind of, you know, tables and seating arrangements available, as well as the closed rooms for groupings or, you know, times that we need, you know, a little more seclusion for, you know, a lesson or a discussion.
Thank you.
I think that helps. There's so much more.
And do you plan to get accredited?
Yes, we do. So through the New England Association for Schools and Colleges is who we, if, in so choosing, we would work with. The state of Connecticut gives a list of agencies, and they are the, the ones that would work with a school that goes through grade 12 and is not religiously affiliated. So their requirements for a school is to be operational for a year. So we have already, I've already had a, like, early meeting with them and have the timeline for when we would initiate that process after our first year of operations and then proceed with that.
Great. Just a few more questions. I did read in the application that you would hope to use, like, the outdoor space for things such as recess. And I guess just being familiar with kind of the property, like, where would that would be, like, in the parking lot or?
Well, I think for, like, truly for recess purposes, you know, of, of just unstructured time to be kids. We, you know, would be limited to that grassy area, which isn't terribly narrow, but wouldn't allow for much more than, like, yard games or, you know, sometimes it's just hanging out at this age, too. But also just being able to walk, period, walking in and of itself and then to a destination as close as Philly Park with more, you know, a grassy area to run around, that hiking trails, those types of opportunities. And, and, you know, it's such an important, it enhances learning to be able, all of those things to be possible, to move our bodies, get the blood pumping, as well as, you know, to, to have the unstructured time to kind of offset the, the focus time.
Absolutely. And Commissioner Marshall Neely asked about security, but are they, do you, do you have thoughts on any security measures, like controlled access or fences or anything of that?
Yeah, so I, I haven't gotten too deep into the template and requirements from the, the Connecticut Division that I referenced. And so that will dictate a lot of that, though. The accreditation standards, consider it as well, state, because it's a New England body of accreditation. You know, it's state by state. But there are not, based on other schools in the area as well that I've interacted with, not the same level of requirements for restricting access or having, you know, the sign-in procedures we will have, but not to the degree that the public schools tend to have, by, you know, are required to have. So they, yes, it will be addressed. It's not all mapped out yet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Mallett?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay, Commissioner Ina, any questions regarding this application?
Yes. Do you say your children also will be attending this school?
True. They're here in the room. I have twins who are 12 years old. They're finishing sixth grade at a Montessori school. And the intention and hope, if it's what they each need, is for them to attend starting next year as seventh graders.
Okay. Can I speak to STEM education, your plan for STEM education in this school?
Yeah, so being a non-traditional school, it will certainly encompass such important priorities as STEM education, but without the, the stringency of, of curriculum that, you know, is more standardized. So the opportunity to partner and find local businesses to learn in real life STEM concepts, be exposed to STEM professionals that use these skills in their, you know, careers, to learn in the classroom, on the property, outdoors. I have already considered some curriculum resources that are really able to be applied in this type of a setting. I don't recall the name right in front. I believe it's Quantum Courses, who have attended, you know, a demo, and it's a wonderful program that allows for kind of self-directed learning with teachers' guidance. They provide all the, for, for lab experiments, you know, according to a progressive age-appropriate or grade-appropriate curriculum. So we'll bring in resources like that onsite as well. So a combined consideration and certainly, you know, will integrate, exposing the children to all sorts of topics like that.
My last question. Mr. Goff. Mr. Goff referred, talked about the, the restroom in this building. I am also very, very familiar with this building. Over a long period of time, I've had associates, businesses in that building. The restroom, as I know, it is, is, um, is very small. I have two stalls and maybe one urinal. And, um, will that be adequate for 20, 30, 50 students again to be shared with other adult occupants of that, uh, building? What is?
So that is being addressed. We don't have the final resolution, but that will be part of the code analysis. Um, the architect has explained that it comes down to, and I don't have the figures, a, a ratio of fixtures. And so while the existing restrooms, um, may be kept, it does seem, um, that there may be a need to add, um, it, the way he's communicated it so far, and we're considering all the aspects, especially financially, of course, a single occupancy ADA compliant restroom in addition, which would, um, bring the, the space, the building to compliance, um, ADA-wise and, um, also provide, you know, the option for an individual restroom, um, that the other two, you know, are, they're tight spaces, you're correct. Um, but as far as the shared restrooms with the other, um, tenant, that so far has not been indicated in the code, uh, for education use, that there's any concern for, for having that, uh, potential, you know, of, of a shared, uh, bathroom space.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just have two quick questions. Uh, one of them is, um, wh- what is the requirements for admission to your school?
So we are actively developing that right now. We hope to, um, kind of launch our admissions, um, in May, uh, which is, you know, on the later side, but being our first year, it's, it's the way it's going to play out. Once we, we know, um, all the hurdles can be handled on the per, building permit side. Um, so we're, we don't have it completely, um, itemized as far as admission requirements. What I can say is non-traditional is non-traditional. So, um, it will be a process that is not merit-based or grade-based, is not, um, competitive in the sense of, can you get in? I mean, will, will we be lucky enough to fill and have a waitlist? Um, that'd be great. But as, aside from those components, it will be a process that allows us to determine that we're the right fit for the child and the child's the right fit for us. Now, the first year, we're going to get creative around that because we can't necessarily have a student come and observe or, you know, kind of participate in the learning environment to get, uh, you know, inaction read on both sides. Um, and so we're working out how we might do it in that first year, but certainly going forward, um, into the subsequent years, I think that will be a huge component, um, of engaging with the family, getting a sense of their priorities, of why they're seeking this for their child, really connecting with the child and understanding their learning styles. And, you know, we can't be the right fit for everyone, but trying to develop a process that, you know, allows us to, to get the best sense of that it's a mutually, um, beneficial, you know, fit for, for the school and the, the students.
Okay, and, uh, my last question is, is, are the teachers required to be certified?
They are not. Um, even, uh, once we're accredited, it is not a requirement for private schools, including the, you know, very elite ones that we have in the area. The requirements vary, um, at each of those as far as their, you know, they certainly have certified teachers, do not get me wrong, but it is not a requirement for private schools to have, um, the same certification. So we'll have a varied, um, staff, excuse me, um, for, you know, to begin and over time, I'm sure a mix of traditionally trained educators as well as, um, staff with other expertise working with adolescents and education.
All right, thank you. Uh, yes, Commissioner Golf?
Just, just one follow-up. Um, especially in the discussion, and this is more of a curiosity question, uh, because you're not doing grading, traditional grading and all that. Um, and it's not going to be an issue right away. But I am curious, um, when you get to the point that you are up to a 12th grade and a student graduates from your program, um, what, if anything, do they have to do or will it be in the curriculum so that they will graduate with a high school degree?
Yes. So they, um, a- as a private school, we will be able to, um, to, yes, a, a, a high school diploma. And, um, your question's very valid and, and an important one, certainly, especially for the upper grades. So, um, I plan to and have engaged with from very early on and was lucky enough even to attend the conference that they hold each year. Um, we will use a tool called the Mastery Transcript. Um, and it's a consortium organization. So they have over 500 schools that are members at this point. Not all private, many public school districts across the country are either doing a, a hybrid of traditional transcripts and their, um, more competency-based, um, narrative, uh, sometimes integrated, um, transcripts or, you know, schools that are transitioning. Um, I have been told and I haven't dug into that even Manchester High School has started using it here locally. There's not a lot of us, you know, I, obviously we will be. Um, Miss Porter's school as well, um, is transitioning. They, they certainly, um, they spoke at the conference. So it's a tool that is tech-integrated. Um, hundreds, I think, again, they have the figures and they're always updated, but over 400 colleges and universities have accepted it. And, um, it differs, of course, without a GPA, without the grades listed, but it is very, um, uh, it, uh, able to be used in the college admissions process for, you know, a top read and, and digging deeper, um, as the process continues and, um, it's favorable. You know, there are, um, aspects, of course, if, um, a school like ours has students, um, in 12th grade, as we approach that point, the consortium itself provides the support if, if our students submit their schools that they're applying to and there's one on the list that the consortium hasn't engaged with yet, they reach out to them and inform them before the admissions, um, process starts, so they know what to expect. So there's a lot of great support around it. It's a really smart tool. So we'll set competencies and our students will, um, with the staff, determine as they master those competencies. And they're not subject-specific, but broad-based and really the kind of interdisciplinary nature of the learning that so much is related and overlaps. That oftentimes when we learn one thing, it's not that we're not learning other aspects and of course, not just the academic aspect as well, the mental wellness being paramount with it all, so that they can, you know, leave with a, a good footing in that regard.
Shark, Commissioner Marshall Neely?
Thank you. As far as lunch and kitchen, or where, where do the students get their lunch?
They'll all bring their own lunch, um, which is uncommon. Again, my daughters have gone to a small Montessori school and they do pizza Fridays where they, you know, literally order just pizza from a local pizza shop. But other than that, the students all bring their own lunches. And so there's different, you know, applications of that, but it's not uncommon, certainly at a small school. So everybody will. And I don't have plans for a pizza lunch, but I'm just offering the example, um, you know, over time, um, being able to, um, you know, have the sink to rinse out things, you know, that'll be there. But minimally, you know, anything else, we'll eat together or, you know, depending how the, the rhythm of the day varies, um, eat outside as much as possible and those who would like to. So, by bringing their own food.
So there's no plans for, okay. And, and my, my almost last question. Will you have a recruiter going around to different areas, recruiting students and promoting your school?
I wish. I mean, we will, um, maybe one day, you know, evolve to big enough to have more of a, a dedicated position. I think at this phase, I have some of my board members here. Um, it's all about relationship building and really recognizing that each time I've engaged with people over a number of years already, that even if that given person may not be, you know, the person whose family needs this school, who they might know, who they might know. That's the way it's going to happen at the beginning. We will do outreach and kind of up our kind of, um, intentional marketing to get the word out more as we approach May and have the admissions kind of more solid and ready to go and the, the location locked in a bit more. Um, but not in the sense keeping it, you know, as, um, reasonable financially. We won't have a dedicated staff person to start out.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm going to stop there.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll take comments. Any comments from anyone in the audience? Yes, come to the podium, state your name and, uh, one at a time, please. Uh, name and address, please.
Mark Kessler, eight Fox Chase Road, Bloomfield, Connecticut. Um, I'm obviously the landlord, owner of the building, the owner of GeoQuest. Um, as a resident taxpayer, um, business owner in Bloomfield, um, I'm supportive of this application, notwithstanding the fact that obviously they will be my tenant and, which is always a good thing for a landlord. Um, but I've actually been involved, many of you, I, well, maybe not many, but some of you are aware that my company is an environmental consulting firm and we're heavily involved in Brownfield's redevelopment. And we have been, I've been involved in Brownfield's redevelopment for almost 40 years. And the traditional thought of Brownfield's redevelopment is taking vacant industrial, old industrial properties and revitalizing them and redeveloping them for use. And I think one of the problems that we're currently seeing is that office buildings are potentially going to be the Brownfield's redevelopment of the future. Um, uh, my understanding is vacancy rate in Bloomfield is currently about 17%. The vacancy rate in Hartford is about 40%. Um, empty office buildings are becoming a real issue. I believe that we'll see some change in this. Um, but will we actually ever go back to you know, office buildings that are 80 to 90 to 95% or more full? Um, I don't think so. And I think we are going to need to be creative in trying to find reuse. Um, when I, when I bought to Barnard Lane a number of years ago, and I sort of, and actually I've been at Barnard Lane for close to almost 30 years. I was at number three Barnard Lane for a fair number of years. And as I saw redevelopment of this area with an increase in apartments, one of the thoughts I had is one day are all the owners of the Barnard Lane buildings going to get calls from developers wanting to convert all those area, all these buildings to residential buildings? Or are they going to want to purchase all these buildings so that they can tear them down and build residential units? Because clearly residential use is on the rise and I'm delighted that we're seeing more residential use in, in Bloomfield. I love the idea that this is ultimately going to lead to more restaurants and more interesting places. I don't know if I want to go axe-throwing yet, but, you know, maybe. Um, though the, I think I have my own little smash room in the basement of my house, but, um, but I think sort of looking at creative use of office space is, is important and is going to become even more important. So notwithstanding my personal interest in this application, I think just as, um, a citizen, um, this kind of use is potentially very important. I was very encouraged by some of the initial comments of the commission. Um, and I think this is a, a good plan. I think it's a good future to begin to reinvigorate, um, downtown Bloomfield. So I want to thank you for considering the application. I want to put forth my promotion of it and my wholehearted support. I've been working with the applicant, um, as well as the fire marshal, the architect, um, the other tenants, uh, which actually I'm two of them. Um, and I believe that we can, I, I believe that we can do this. I believe that we can make it work. Um, the other tenant that isn't me is where. Um, and actually, interestingly enough, they came to me with the possibility of coming up with a creative use for the vacant space as well. Um, so I think this kind of creativity is on the rise and I'm hoping that we'll be able to see these types of activities more in the future. So I'm encouraged by your support and I'm hoping you will approve the application.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Linda, is there anyone online?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
So hello, um, my name is Crystal Jones. I'm at eight White Birch Circle. And, um, I'll give you just a brief history. Um, I moved to Bloomfield in 2018 and prior to that I lived in Windsor. And even though I lived in Windsor, I wanted my daughter to be in an independent school. And so while I was in Windsor, I searched around for an independent school and I ended up in Simsbury. And here I was driving 30 minutes every day, get my daughter to school and back. So, um, my spouse passed away and I decided that I wanted to move closer to her school 'cause I was responsible for all the drop-off, all the pickup. So I wanted to move closer. And so she was in Simsbury. Initially, I was going to move to Simsbury. Um, but I ended up finding a house that I really liked in Bloomfield, which was brought me closer to Simsbury, but at least I wasn't a half hour away. Takes me 12 minutes to get her to and from school. So, an independent school in Bloomfield, I think, would be amazing. Not just for the town of Bloomfield, but people in surrounding towns who are looking for independent schools. And I know Sasha, our daughters have gone to school together, uh, since they were little, 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 little. And every since I met her, she told me, I want to start a school. I want to start a school. And I'm thinking, oh, you gotta be crazy. That's gotta be a huge feat. It's, I'm like, and so she's like, I want to start a school. So, but when she was really getting serious, I'm like, whoa, she is serious about this school. She was meeting with all different people. This is before she even found this space. She was talking to people with the state and everything to get this done. She is super responsible. She, her twins are awesome. And, and let me tell you, these girls are totally different people. Managing those two, I don't know how. They are totally different people. So she, um, I think that this is an asset to our town. It would draw people in, even if they're just driving here to drop their kid off. And then they see the other things happening in our town. It could bring us more, you know, more people, more vibrancy to our town. I am for this application. I hope you guys approve it. I think, uh, the whole town could benefit. And just to add one little piece, uh, I have a friend who is a, um, a Bloomfield resident and she has three children. And she was looking for independent school. Um, because we didn't, I didn't want to do parochial, she didn't either, but because she didn't want a big drive, she ended up doing parochial. Imagine if this school was here, you know? She'd be right here. So I'm for it.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, at this time, we'll take comments from the commission and we'll start with Commissioner Ina. Any comments regarding this application?
I don't have any comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Mallett?
Thank you. Uh, I think this is a good use for, um, or a site location for a school and education. Um, and hopefully, uh, you know, the successes that you have will, will be, uh, looked at by other, other schools and, um, it'll be a good, uh, as was mentioned in some of the comments, just a, a good opportunity and choice for families in the area. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Commissioner James?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm really excited about the application and the prospect of a new school. I thank you for choosing Bloomfield and especially the site that you've chosen. I do think it will add to the vibrancy of the area. Um, we're going to be, we've been discussing it a lot in town and so, um, I do think it's a great use of, um, where office space is really hard to fill these days, that, um, this will be a great thing to have. And I appreciate you, I just appreciate the thoroughness of your application. I can tell you put a lot of time and consideration into it. Um, and I did like to see the note from the fire marshal to have that exit door. Um, I, I, I really, um, I, I really, um, think that would be a great addition for the space. And then I am glad that you plan to get accredited. I just took a peek at the accrediting standards, and they seem very thorough and, uh, much more than anything we could require by condition. So I wish you the best of luck, and, um, thank you for coming to Bloomfield.
Hey, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Goff.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I will echo, uh, the comments made so far, especially Commissioner James. But I also want to echo the comments made by Mr. Kessler. And, um, you know, we need to, we need to revitalize the town. Uh, there's a lot of work, I think people know, going on right now with, uh, looking at the center. There's a master plan going on. Uh, this is exactly the kind of activity we need. People talk a lot about restaurants, and that's fine, you can have some of those. But we need variety, and we need feet on the street, and we need people doing things in town. You mentioned the Trees for Bloomfield. I just want to point out to you that the Town Hall grounds across the street are an arboretum. So this is a great place for your students to learn how to identify and to know the various types of trees. That was courtesy largely of our beautification committee, uh, and the Trees for Bloomfield initiative. And, um, you know, uh, it, there, there was a mention of STEM. Uh, I would hope that you and your landlord, uh, could potentially work out some programs so that students-
I should have named the obvious, yes.
So, so, so that students could get involved in that and, and understand, um, what's going on. I just think this, this is, you know, this is the kind of application and the kind of activity and use that we need. Because, you know, it, it hopefully will be a virtuous circle. We get people here, we get people out in the town. Our, things get used, the activity generates buzz, as you were talking about getting, recruiting people. Uh, so I think this is a great application, and I look forward to your, uh, joining the community. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Commissioner Marshall Neely.
I'm going to try to be brief. But in full disclosure, I love non-traditional schools. That's my background, one of my passions. And, um, non-traditional is not an alternative school. It is non-traditional. And my role in a non-traditional, um, probably educated me more than it did the kids, because I loved it. One thing that I do know is in prep for college, not all students are going to go to college. Not all of them want to go to college. However, in the state of Connecticut, until it changes, there is an opportunity for juniors and seniors to dual enroll in a community college for free. And they get to learn that college experience and determine for themselves on a non-traditional basis whether or not college is for them. So I, I'm not concerned about STEM because I know in non-traditional education, you're gonna get STEM, you're going to get, um, hands-on learning, real-world learning. And I, I wish you could open up two of them in Bloomfield. I really do. So I, I was trying to, uh, control my, my smiling. I know Kelly was probably saying, will you stop smiling? I was trying to control my spot, my smiling, because I was so excited to, to hear you talk about what I am already familiar with. So thank you for bringing this to Bloomfield. And thank you for, for continuing to have your passion for nurturing students of all ages. And, uh, with that, I'm going to close my mouth.
Brooke, thank you. Commissioner Bolton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My mother is a retired Hartford school public teacher. Um, I've done a lot of work in the Hartford School Building Program, Construction Program. I think that you adding to the diversity of school choice in the town of Bloomfield is awesome. I, I, I agree with Commissioner Jennifer here that I wish you, you were building too. I certainly hope you expand. Um, we need school choice. We, we need more choices, um, other than traditional schooling. And so thank you, um, for coming to the town of Bloomfield. And if you ever decide to do your Friday pizza, Bloomfield Village Pizza has wonderful pizza.
Good to know. Good to know. We're not opposed to it.
And, and I'll just say, um, I thank you for coming to Bloomfield, and I wish you the best in this endeavor. And I'm hoping that, uh, like they said, that, that, that your school will grow and maybe get a larger building and go from one through ca, one through twelve. So I'm just wishing you all the best in this, and thank you for coming to Bloomfield. With that said, is there anything else you'd like to say before we close the public hearing?
No, I just want to thank you all again. This is so heartening, is that, as I said, the letters of support, all these wonderful people who have given their time in various ways to support me, um, concretely. And, uh, you know, just to boost me all the time and believing that this is worthwhile. It, I just want to thank you all. Um, and I will hold on to all that you've said to keep me going. As daunting as it continually is, I would much rather do this than the, the axe-throwing business. That, to me, feels very tedious. So, you know, I think we each have our thresholds, right? And, um, you know, many people say, how do you know how to do that? And I've learned so much along the way. I've been lucky to have people volunteer their time with expertise to guide me. I've been, you know, just able to figure it out as I go and continue to figure it out as I go. So I'm grateful to be here. I could preach to the choir all day about why Bloomfield's the right place for us on so many levels. And I just do think that your town center, as all the efforts to revitalize, are, you know, warranted and wonderful, that so much energy is going into it. It is unique in this whole area. My daughters, um, have adjusted to me being, you know, working more than I have through most of their life. And we have been in the center of many towns in the area for them to walk around while I work at a coffee shop. And while each town has their own flavor, this is robust, and there's just so much more. And to think of schoolchildren having this experience. There, I mean, I think we'd be hard-pressed with many fabulous schools to think of, schools that get to have this walkability available to them right outside our doors. So it just, you know, it, it's the community aspect, everything about it. I thank you, um, for what you do to help, you know, bring that along in all the ways that you do. And I'm really excited to be here.
Okay, thank you. With that said, the chair entertain a motion to close this public heari, hearing?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, chair votes aye. This time, the chair entertain a motion on this application.
I motion to approve the request by Sasha-
Zatirka.
Zatirka, for a special permit use and revised site plan for a private school per section four point one, point D, point four, point V of the zoning regulations at two Barnard Lane Suite 101 with the following conditions, as noted in staff report dated March twenty first, twenty twenty five.
Chair, second?
I second.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, chair votes aye. Congratulations. Wish you the best of luck. Okay. Next item on the agenda. Uh, it requires a public hearing. However, we're going to, the chair is going to entertain a motion to table this application until the, uh, April twenty fourth meeting. Uh, I'll just read the application. Uh, it's a, um, special permit use and revised site plan per section four dot four, dot C dot four dot B B, and six dot two dot H for commercial kitchen within a convenience store and a thirty percent parking reduction in the I two district. Applicant is Amin B Lee, property owner, Khalid, comma, LLC. Is there a motion to table this application until the April twenty fourth meeting?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda, we're going to old business. And it's a continued review of our plan of conservation development. Final draft. Uh, Jonathan.
Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting, we received some really good, positive input from all members of the commission. And as I indicated, I wanted to review those with the, uh, with the consultant, Goman and York. Particularly, um, the, um, the recommended changes to the, uh, future land use map. I was, um, they were unable to meet with me until this, till this past Tuesday, where Linda and I had a very productive meeting with them. Uh, but unfortunately, we were, we are unable to have the map, uh, prepared. Uh, the map work is actually going to be done by, uh, by staff here in the IT department, uh, in, in Town Hall. Uh, they estimate, because we're basically going to create a new map, that it's going to take about ten days to do that, uh, to incorporate all of the changes that we, we want to show on that map. Uh, meanwhile, Goman and York will be, will be making the, um, text changes, which are fairly minor. Uh, but, um, with the commission's indulgence, um, we should have that all buttoned up, um, within the next ten to twelve days. And then if the commission wishes, we can have a special meeting to just adjust the plan of development or add it to, um, the April meeting.
Okay, thank you. Um, I guess I'll ask the commission what their preference is. Jonathan, say staff will be working on the land use portion of the plan of conservation development. That won't be done for about another week, week and a half. Um, we can ask for a special meeting to deal with just that and finish this prior to our April twenty fourth meeting, or we can wait till April twenty fourth and add this on the agenda. So I will ask if you guys have any preference on how you want to, uh, address this.
Can I ask a process question?
Sure.
Is the idea that you'd make the changes, we'd review, and then hopefully vote on it to go to the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
Get it on its way.
Mr. Chair. Sure. Yeah, no, I, I, that's, I think we want to get it out as soon as possible. On the other hand, we are going to be hitting, you know, we're hitting the end of budget. There will be the annual town meeting on first week in May, I think. So I guess I would ask, I would ask the, uh, director's thoughts on when people, when, when he thinks that the residents and, uh, you know, the council, the C E C, the E D C, the, the various people who are going to want to review this and add, you know, and have public outreach on this. When they're, you know, whether that, if we had a special meeting early April, then the clock would start ticking, and we would need to approve it in early June. If we wait until April twenty fourth, we'd improve it in later June. So do you, do you have any thought on that?
You know, I think, I think you're right. Until we get through the budget, it's, you know, and, and to some degree, the town center plan, uh, which is going to be acted on by the, uh, town center committee in, in early May, that I think, um, going to your April twenty fourth meeting and then moving it out a little bit probably gives it, uh, the opportunity to be more focused on, uh, subsequent to the other items. Um, we will also have to have a public hearing, and, you know, we might want to do that public hearing at, at our May meeting. And then, um, so I, I think that if you, um, have it on your twenty fourth agenda, and we're careful not to, um, you know, overload that agenda with other items, and also get it out to you earlier, it gives you a chance to, um, to, um, to review it and at, at, uh, at a more appropriate pace. Um, I, I think that, um, the twenty fourth is probably as appropriate a date as, as possible. And our charge is just to get it to you as soon as we can.
Okay, with that said, um, are we in agreement that we will put this on the agenda for April twenty fourth? All right, do we need a motion for that, John?
You do not.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, to continue our discussion on inclusionary zoning.
Our second charge at the last meeting was to, to get our button order on inclusionary zoning regulations. Again, uh, we, we, um, wanted the opportunity to meet with Goman and York, and we had that conversation with them as well on Tuesday. And, uh, we had, did send out late yesterday and have written, uh, have, if you didn't print them, we provided you print and printed copies of, um, what we believe is, um, a fairly, um, inclusive draft of proposed regulations for, um, for inclusionary zoning. Uh, we have incorporated many of the, um, committee, commission's, um, requests and comments and suggestions. Uh, the one thing, um, that is not in there, which the consultant, um, was fairly firm in suggesting we not include is, um, is the sliding scale, uh, for, um, for, uh, qualifications. They felt fairly strongly that once you got below eighty, uh, percent, you began to challenge, uh, the financial feasibility of, of the developments, particularly, um, developments for sale, uh, and to some degree, developments, rental developments. Rental developments have a longer, um, capacity to, um, to incorporate, um, the effects of, um, reduced revenue. Those for sale basically incorporated at the time of sale, and it becomes much more challenging. We is, we did put in, uh, you know, the ten percent, and we also put in, uh, bonuses, uh, of, um, two units for each, uh, unit, which is sort of the standard for affordable. And we've also put in a provision that allows the commission, at its, at its discretion, to modify, uh, the bulk and parking provisions of the zoning regulations, um, if, if additional affordable units are provided. Uh, and we specifically did not put in, um, sort of guidelines because they can vary, vary a great deal depending on the site and how the development wants to be built in terms of, um, coverage, height, parking, and that one. We felt it was best to give the commission as much discretion in that regard, where you could really act as a, as a planning group, as opposed to just a zoning group. Uh, that's sort of a summary of them. I, not, and, um, again, I, you know, once you feel comfortable, then we can set it for public hearing and, uh, move forward to adoption.
Okay, this time, we'll take, uh, any questions the commission might have on what is presented to us? And we'll start with, uh, Commissioner Aina. Do you have any questions regarding the staff's proposal for the inclusionary zoning provisions, our regulations?
No questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Mallett.
Thank you. I, I did notice the sliding scale or, or the adjustments in that applicability, was not there. So it seems like we're, if I'm reading this, it's just a minimum of twelve, regardless of the number of units?
It's a minimum of twelve percent, right, depending on, yeah, whether eighty. Most of them are going to be in, are going to be at eighty percent?
Eight, yeah, eighty percent for the, for the, um, the eligibility to-
AMI.
Qualified for it. I was, I was thinking more of the, the sliding scale on, so it's just a flat twelve percent for anything above ten units? Not, not talking about the, uh, the tenants, but, uh-
That's correct.
So twelve percent flat rate, um, are, do we have any rules around rounding, um, up or down?
We can, some, one of the ordinances we read did have that. We can put that in. Um, you know, if it's a, you know, if it's over point five or whatnot.
Yeah, it might be helpful to just-
Okay.
I know it's tedious, but, um-
We're trying to keep them as simple as we can.
Yeah, of course. The, I think I, I read in the definitions, I had a, a note here for the Housing Affordability Plan, and it, are there templates? But it looks like the template is the guidance given by the, the Connecticut-
By the statutes, right.
Statutes, so I think that answered that question. Then the next one was on, uh, fourteen B, the ten dollars per square foot. So I know that's a starting place. I'm just trying to get a sense of, i- is that, like, occurring? I'm just trying to get a sense of, is that like occurring, like standard use?
Yes.
And I'm just wondering, when we get to that valuation at every five or 10 years, is the CPI the best rate? Or is it some, what is driving that? To get to the $10 today, would the CPI be the right factor?
That seemed to be really the best factor in terms of dealing with inflation.
Okay.
You know, it's the most common used. It's the most, it's the most, one that most people know about, know what it is.
So the driving factor is the cost to build?
Right.
Okay. Density bonus. I thought it might be helpful to see a grid, but I suppose I just don't want to do the math. Just to see a couple of options if there's this many units and then what the buy-up might be. Sometimes it's helpful to see a table of what that might be. But I think it's still outlined. I definitely agree with the discretionary modifications. Certainly helps us not have to go to the ZBA to do something that makes sense in knowing, you know, the financial burden is typically not something that they can, they would consider in the first place. So I like that section under requirements. The commercial linkage, I'm not so sure I'm convinced that that's something we need. It does seem something that a lot of big cities have done. And my question would be, so the 10%, my understanding from the last meeting was if we changed any fee schedules, it had to go through Council, right?
Correct.
So are we saying it was an additional 10%? Or I think we asked this and we weren't sure. Or was it part of the fee? And would that have to go through Town Council?
That is the question.
Okay.
And the answer is, any fees have to be approved by Council by ordinance, A. And B, it is intended here to be a portion of the fee, not in addition to the fee.
Okay, so 90/10.
In other words, if the fee was $10,000 and 10% was $1,000, the $1,000 would go into the trust fund, and $9,000 would be the fee that went into the general fund.
Okay.
As opposed to a total of 11. And the consultant questioned, you know, and we have not gotten an official, but he's been around a long time, questioned the legality of the fee being in addition to, in other words, a building permit fee being in addition to for that.
I mean.
So it would be a takeaway. And so the mean, the Council's going to decide, you know, the money is going to go. It's basically designating money to a certain location.
So if we had done this last year, 10% for, I mean, how much would be going into the fund?
Councilman Commissioner Renee asked that, and I responded to her. Question is, did I keep it?
Yeah, it was about a million.
A million.
I think I. Permit fees.
Yeah, we took 1.3 million in permit fees, so it'd be 130,000.
Okay.
And as a, I also indicated to her, just for comparable purposes, apparently the town of Mansfield has a housing trust fund with 500,000 in it.
Okay.
You said 5 million.
I mean, 5 million.
We got 500,000.
Right, we have 500,000, it's just 5 million.
For the housing fund, so if the money's transferred over there, what are the, and I should know this, but what are the limits or the, for spending that? It looks like it could go towards building or possibly renovating or existing units. It seems like it can kind of.
The policies and procedures for the housing trust fund, crying frankly, are not in place as yet.
Okay.
So that is still being developed both by staff and the Council. But right now, there's a fund, but there's not a set of policies.
I would want to see it definitely aligned toward making it an affordable unit versus something else that might, you know, I just would want to see it very specifically used. I have, it's what I'm trying to say.
Its intent is to encourage and assist affordability in workforce housing.
I would just, I think I saw somewhere, and it may not have been in our documents, it might have been somewhere else, that it could go to, you know, efficiency, this, or, and that's wonderful, but that is not the purpose. That would be a different thing.
Understood.
And then on the deed restrictions, I think I was looking for a definition of the maximum allowable sales price or if there's something that could help clarify what that was on the pricing. And I think that was my notes.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner James. We'll take questions or comments.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll do it all in one.
Well, I really am excited about pushing some inclusionary zoning regulations, putting, getting them on the books, having a public hearing actually first to see how the community feels about the regulations. I did ask about the commercial permit fees, how much that might look like in a dollar figure. And I don't know, I guess that's still something I'm going back and forth on. Nice, it's nice to be included into fund our housing trust fund, but if those, if it's inclusive of the commercial, of, if it's inclusive of the commercial fees and those dollars are already allocated to something, then it kind of, it just doesn't add up to me to how now we take them dollars from another place in the budget and put it in the Affordable Trust Fund. That gives, that leaves a hole somewhere else. So I guess we have to figure out how to really reconcile that. And that, I guess that would be the Planning Department or Town Council or somebody. But that's my biggest concern. But I really hope that we can keep pushing this forward and get a public hearing set so that we can start to get some of these units in town.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I echo that. I'll come back to that in a second. I think this is very good, you know, summation document. After the original document we got from Goman in York and after the discussions we've had and putting everything in. I had one question on the, I have few minor typos or minor things in terms of just wordsmithing. But on the definitions portion, Article 2 definitions, which would go up into our definitions in the zoning rules, it mentions the Housing Affordability Plan. It defines that. And it says, "A comprehensive plan required under CGS Section 830G that outlines the strategies and commitments a developer will implement to ensure the construction, marketing, blah, blah, blah." Should that be a developer or should that be a municipality?
No, it's the developer applicant that prepares that as part of their submission that he presents to, it would come to us. When we did Arbella, Blue Hills Avenue, that was part of their application.
So they have to do a housing.
They have to do it.
Okay, this, as opposed to our master plan that we have.
Correct.
Okay, so I was reading that incorrectly. Good, thank you. So I think my only question at this point, I'm happy with this as a, as getting something in place. I think that we had the Blue Hills application, which I was not here for that application that night, but I think everyone was extremely happy with it, except potentially for the traffic, the traffic issues. But we, the developer certainly did the right thing, putting 10% in. If we'd had this document in place, they would have been 12% in. And I think it was completely legitimate, they said, you know, when they were asked, "We can't put more in now because we did our planning based on 10." So I think it's imperative that we get this in place. So I guess my question to you, we need to have a, we need, we have a public hearing, we pass this, and then once we pass it, it goes to the Town Council and they, what is the procedure here?
Well, other than the fees, it's all within our control.
Okay, so if we, go ahead.
If we pass it, then the only thing that we would not be able to put in when we pass it would be the fees per se.
The amount of the fees.
Right.
So we would pass this, so that would be, that would be everywhere? So we would say, paying a fee in lieu of, there would be a.
I would ask, I think we may be able to put in the payment in lieu of.
The payment in lieu of fees. So the only, it would only be.
The only one would be the, would be the commercial.
And so we, there, we would pass this saying, "The commercial linkage shall be X% of building permit fees." And then if we go to Council, they could decide that was zero.
That's right.
If they wanted to, to Commissioner James's point.
Correct.
Or they could look at the fee schedule and decide what money was going into the general account, the general fund. So I, you know, I would, I would like us hopefully to move ahead with this. You know, I would make a motion to move this to a public hearing and, you know, and move it forward so that we can get this done.
We can, you can assign it for public hearing for the meeting on the 24th of April if you wish.
Is that motion in order? Or would you like to finish comments and questions?
We don't have to wait on the PLCD or anything like this. This is just an amendment to our regulations. So, yeah, we can put this on the agenda for our next meeting.
We wouldn't just put it on the agenda?
But first, let's finish the, let everyone have a chance to weigh in.
Right.
Commissioner Marshall Neely, do you have any questions or comments?
I don't have any questions or comments. I concur with Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bolton?
The way the Commissioner picked up all that paper, I was expecting some solid questions there. Yeah, aggressive. So if we can't include the commercial linkage in our tax amendment, why are we, why is it here?
Well, it's there.
Shouldn't we petition the Council?
It needs to be part of the regulations when, if and when the Council adopts the fees. But the regulation is in the zoning regulations. It's just like our, like the permit fees for all of our permits. Those are in our administrative procedures. But the fee is actually set by ordinance by the Council.
So this would be relegated to the administrative portion?
That would be an ordinance.
It's, and I don't know that I'm in agreement with this commercial linkage fee. I think it's going to hurt our development. But is there a reason why our town, our homeowners don't have any skin in this game? It's just limited to renovations, new construction for commercial businesses, industrial businesses, mercantile. What about residential?
Single-family residential?
Is that included in the commercial? It just says alterations.
If a subdivision is proposed, it would be part of a subdivision. If you had 10 or more lots, it would apply. But if, you know, if you're coming in to, you know, redo your kitchen, it's not going to apply.
Why?
I think we've, I think we have consistently tried to not burden the individual homeowner with any additional costs that aren't absolutely necessary. I mean, most, in our regular permit fee structure, homeowners do not pay what a commercial would pay or whatnot. So that there's that sliding rate. I do not know of any town that applies this to single-family homes or homeowners.
Again, I'm not, I don't even like it, but I'm just asking that if we're going to hold developers to, and I understand the difference of, I pull permits all the time, but that the residents of Bloomsbury should have some skin in this game. I mean, it's our housing trust. Why aren't we paying into it? But nonetheless, I don't even like the commercial linkage piece here. Phasing, I think I understand what you're trying to do here. But can you explain to me what you're trying to do here under phasing?
Basically, we're saying that you need to, you need to put in place the affordable units at the same rate you're putting in the market rate units.
Or you withhold the certificate of occupancy? I mean, I don't, I don't quite get it, but if I have a development and I'm going to give you the 12%, I'm going to build out to meet my schedule, right? Because my costs are tied into that, to that timeline.
I think it's to ensure, one, that the affordable units aren't the last thing built. And secondly, to try and get a dispersion of the affordable units, that they aren't just in one section of the development.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Ola, if you can mute yourself, please. Thank you.
I think that's all I, I think that's all I had. I mean, I agree with Commissioner Goff and Commissioner James that we should move this thing forward to, you know, the public hearing. Hey, why not 15%?
Begins to challenge the financial feasibility.
Boy, listen, I could, you're the president of choir, I get it.
Mr. Chair, one additional question.
Sure. Commissioner Millet?
It is going back to the commercial linkage share. And I wanted to make sure or just bring up, could, if they potentially came into town and they, would abatements potentially offset this? Would they be basically paying for one and not the other? I was kind of worried about them getting around it that way.
I wouldn't call it getting around it, but I think that the number of developers, with or without the affordable, would be requesting a tax agreement. You know, the ones in the center of town have them. And I think that that's not uncommon across the region, that they're, that they are seeking tax agreements and that. And obviously, a decision by the Council. But you still are, I mean, the objective of all of this, when we're all said and done, is to increase the number of affordable units and make them available. I don't know if I, as an aside, I know there's other questions, but we did get in late February, the percentage count for last year for affordable units. And interestingly enough, our percentage went up from 10.65 to 11.3. And you say, "How can that be with all of the market rate housing that's being developed?" Well, we did have some additional FHA-type housing in town in addition. But interestingly, the base is the 2020 census. And that base does not change until the 2030 census. So in terms of dealing with the percentage, we're probably going to be okay till we get to 2030. That's not to mean we shouldn't do it, but the only thing is that it means that, you know, that a developer just can't come in and do what they want to do because we're over 10%. That does not lessen the need in town and the desire to do it.
Okay, I just have one question for you, Jonathan, and this regarding the commercial linkage. I know we were just talking about it and it, you know, I guess the recommendation was like a 90/10 split. And I know Commissioner James was probably a little curious about that. Could we charge them the extra? In other words, whatever that fee is above and beyond the.
Our consultant does not believe we have the authority to do that. But certainly, you could request an opinion from Town Council, which would be the ultimate SEL, the Town Attorney. My suggestion is, because I think that this seems to be the most, the most section under. section under, under consideration in terms of which way we want to go, that you hold the public hearing and see what feedback you get at the public hearing. And then see if there's a, you know, a strong position one way or the other for the linkage fee. And then once, once we have that settled, then we can ask for an opinion from the Town Attorney as to whether or not, in their opinion, the fee can be in addition to as opposed to be part of.
As basically we'll be asking them to pay more.
That's correct. And our consultant does not, questions the legality of that.
Okay.
But he's not an attorney.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question?
Yeah, Commissioner Bolton?
The town, the overall development for the town, I, I don't know whether it's, it's led by the municipality, which I would wonder how they would take anything domain if, if, if the town of Bloemville took charge of that. But not knowing who the developer is going to be and whether it's a quasi affair between the town and a private developer, would this development have to pay that commercial linkage fee? Or would it be exempt because, let's say, the town of Bloemville becomes a partner in the development?
Depending on how it's structured. My sense is that development would pay a linkage fee under the way we have it written.
Just, Mr. Chair? Yeah, I, I think that, I think that, I just wanted to point out to Commissioner Bolton that at the top of the third page in the, in section, into section one in the commercial linkage fee, it does say, "Construction projects being developed by or on behalf of any federal, state, or local government entity shall be exempt." But as the planners pointed out, it would depend on how that was structured. You know, I think that's.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
One, Commissioner Goff?
Just, just one other thing, because I think we're in agreement of moving this to the public hearing. Just a couple of quick notes on the document, very minor points. On the Section 614F Administration, I think at the end of that intro paragraph, it says, after it says Affordable Housing Plan, I think there's an extraneous period there. I think there's an artifact period.
There is.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
The next line down, annual monitoring. The third line, it says, "Income status for resident." I think that should be, in any case, I think it should be income status something the resident, but it should be for or of. So should it read income status for the resident or income status of the resident?
Period.
Yeah. In the deed restrictions, I would put a space between A and B, just a line space.
Okay.
And on the last page, on the definitions, on the density bonus, at the very end of that line, while giving, it says, "While giving developers the opportunity to maximize their investment." I don't think I necessarily agree with that. I would say developers the opportunity to realize their investment.
Where are you again?
Density bonus.
Definition.
In definition. This encourages the development of affordable housing while giving developers the opportunity. I would change it to realize their investment, which I certainly agree with, making a, a fair and reasonable profit. But I also don't know necessarily our job is to make sure they maximize their investment.
Yep.
So, but, but yes, I think this is, I think this is very good. And I, I agree with the strategy. Let's see what, let's see what the public says. Let's see what the council says.
Hey. All right. So do we need a motion to put this on the agenda for our next meeting?
No, we can, staff can just put it on.
Okay, fantastic. Okay. Next item on the agenda, under new business, 95 Granby Street, a request for an extension to the July 23, 2020 revised site plan approval for retail and manufacturing establishment. Is there anyone here for that application?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Well, what's?
No, there's.
And if Mike, Linda's going to take this.
Okay.
Hi, Linda Loriano, Assistant Director of Building and Land Use. This request came in by one of the property owners on March 9, requesting an extension. 95 Granby Street has been the subject of some zoning enforcement undertaking. And as part of that, we found that their revised site plan that was approved in July 23, 2020, one, have a deadline for completion, all the site improvements by July 23, 2025. And the applicant has not even started, you know, any, any work on their site improvement on there. In addition to that, there were other just zoning enforcement regarding outdoor storage. And so the property owner is working with staff on, you know, on efforts, you know, to come into compliance. And so we brought to their attention that they may want to seek an extension as part of, you know, efforts for compliance, for reaching complete compliance. I think that a request for an additional five years would be excessive, being that, one, they did get a certificate of occupancy for the building itself to utilize it as a retail establishment, and they have been in operation since before COVID. However, they, you know, their claim is that they have not been able to do any further site improvement, especially to the exterior because of financial issues. However, you know, they do, or they have been renting individual parking spaces out. So there is income coming in. I'm not sure, you know, the validity of their claim. But in efforts to work with them, we do want to give them, one, a year to either come back with a revised site plan, or at least give them time to apply for the appropriate permits and to start some site improvement. And two, or come back for, with a new application if they want permission to do what they're currently doing now, which they have no approvals for. So this is just, you know, efforts to, one, not extend the site plan approval too long, because then that'll prolong the efforts of site improvement at that site. And so I thought, you know, putting in a year would, the recommended is a year to the commission by staff. If you're comfortable with that, then that's something to consider. And if not, you can put a longer term of not more than five years, which is very common in a lot of other development, but more for vacant land that have been approved. And I know you've, you've had others that have come before you for an extension, but those sites were not subject to current zoning enforcements.
So the short recommendation is the staff is recommending a one-year extension.
Correct.
Although you can go up to five years if you so wish. We think one year is appropriate for this location.
Okay. Thank you. Well, with no one here to speak on this outside of staff, is there any questions with the staff recommendation for a one-year extension versus the applicant who was recommending five years?
Yes, Commissioner Goff.
I, I just have one question. If we gave them a one-year extension, can they take another bite of the apple or is this it?
Actually, that's a good question. We can put one-year extension with the option of coming back to the commission with additional extension.
Or not.
Or not. Or not. It would be up to the commission if you wanted to put that, but yes.
So unless we put that in?
Right.
This would, this would be?
It would expire.
One and done, is that?
One, yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll follow up on that. Do you think that would be necessary to get them to start complying?
I do.
Well, what's? Okay.
And/or come back with a new application and start the process over.
Exactly. I mean, if they do the extension and I don't get it done with any extension, then in essence, they're back to square one in terms of having to come back for a new application. So they'd have to come back anyway, but it didn't have to be a full new application.
Okay. Yep, I'm in favor of that. Okay, then we'll entertain a motion on that then? All right, the chair would like to entertain a motion on staff's recommendation for 95 Granby Street to grant a one-year extension for the revised site plan approval for retail and manufacturing establishment instead of the five-year that was recommended, that was asked that the committee to support as far as the applicant. So is there a motion for a one-year extension?
So moved. That would be till July 2026.
July 23, yes.
July 23, 2026.
Right, for the, okay, for the one-year extension, yes.
Sorry, who's seconded that? I know you.
I'll second. Yeah.
James?
Yeah, I did say second. I had a question. Can I ask?
Sure.
Are we adding that option to extend after the one year or no? No, I'm fine with that.
Yep. Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to grant a one-year extension to July 23, 2026 for revised site plan approval for 95 Granby Street for retail and manufacturing establishment. And I believe it's been moved and it's been seconded. Are there any further discussions regarding this application? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting a one-year extension signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstention? Chair votes aye. Okay, next item on the agenda is the appointment of a new Commission Secretary for our Planning and Zoning Commission. And I'd like to make a motion to nominate Commissioner Renee James to be our next secretary on planning and zoning. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any further discussions regarding this nomination? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention? Chair votes aye. Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Okay, next item on the agenda, I should say, last item on the agenda, is the Town Center Plan referral from the Town Center EDC Committee. Jonathan?
Mr. Chairman, in accordance with state statutes, the Town Center Economic Development Commission has prepared a Town Center Master Plan. And under those statutes, that master plan has to be referred to, has to have a public hearing, which is scheduled for late, late April, has to have it referred to the Town Plan and Zoning Commission. And the legal requirement for us is for us to find that that plan is in conformity with our Plan of Conservation and Development, which I believe it is in both the existing and the proposed. And it's also referred to the Capital Region Council of Governments for their view. And as I said, there will be a public hearing. We would need to act on our comments and to the, at our, at the April 24 meeting. So we have until that time to, for you all to go through it and read it and, and determine on your own whether you believe it does conform to the Plan of Conservation and Development and any other comments that you might have regarding it. We are not restricted in the comments we can make, other than that we are required to indicate if we so believe that the plan is in conformity with the Plan of Conservation and Development. And then after we submit our comments, I, the committee, I think, meets in early May for them to take final action on the draft plan. And then it is submitted to the Town Council for their review and action. The legislative body has to act on the plan in this, in this particular instance. For our plan, they do not. But for this Town Center Plan, because it's a Chapter 130 process, to have the full, they need the full weight of the legislative going forward. So that's where that is. So I encourage you to read it. If you have questions, please give us a call. Is there any interest, and I know we can do it, in having Goman in New York make a presentation to you on the plan, but have to again occur on the 24th? Or are you, are you comfortable reading it? And if you have some questions, we can pass them back to them.
Yeah, well, we have a big agenda for that.
Well, we made, we've, we made it.
For the 24th?
You're going to have the POCD discussion, probably sending, sending that to another public hearing. You're going to have the Inclusionary Zoning Public Hearing. Their presentation can be fairly, fairly brief, but presumably by then, you will have read it and made some decisions. So I, you know, it may be better if you read it and you have specific questions, you funnel them to me and I can get them to them.
Okay. All right. So at this, at this point, we won't actually plan on a presentation. We'll just go through this and?
It'll be, it'll be on the agenda for action, though.
Exactly. Okay. Okay, with that said, last item on the agenda, Jonathan, you have any staff reports or anything that you want to report out on?
Popeyes has come into town. They have submitted.
They're back?
They have submitted their plans.
Okay.
I think that's the, that's the news of the week.
Okay. All right, excellent. If that's all you have, the chair entertained a motion.
So moved.
Thank you all for your, for your efforts and your input.
Meeting is adjourned at 9:48 PM.
Thank you.
It's going to be great.
Popeyes, wasn't it two years?
It's been a minute.
It's been a while.
They've been here, they've been gone.